... deliberated on for some time and put your due diligence into and now you have an action item in front of you and an open session.
All right, I appreciate it. As Mr. Berry said, you know, a lot of rumors going around that we asked Mr. Berry to step down, quite the opposite. He's been wanting to retire for almost two years now and we've just kind of been pushing it off, pushing it off. And rightfully so because we feel we've got the right candidate to fill his shoes. I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Mestes and I think he's going to be a valuable asset to this community. So at this time, I would take any comments from the commission and then I might ask Dr. Mestes if you'd just make a little, just a brief little snippet about yourself as soon as the commission's done. Any comments, questions?
Well, it should be noted that Dr. Mestes had a resume that you go, "This can't be real. There's so much good on it." And we checked it out and it's real.
I liked, we had interviews with him and talked to him and I liked a lot what I heard and he brought his friend with him tonight and that's good too. So, welcome.
I'd like to follow in the footsteps of Dr. Mestes and we very well appreciate your resume.
Yeah, and I would say just the small thing I could pick on him about, he's a Trinidad miner. So, you know, I mean, I guess we can live with that. But that, I still feel he's a local boy. So, Dr. Mestes, if you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, and I will be very brief. I just appreciate the trust and confidence that the commission has put in me and I will work very hard for the city of Raton to move forward and to do great things. I would also like to thank Scott Berry for the generosity of his time. He has been amazing. He's been a wealth of information and I hate to see him go too. So, thank you. I'd like to introduce my better half, Mary Elder, and she just recently retired from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and she's a Navy veteran. So, we're already made an offer on a house here in Raton, so here I come.
Wonderful, wonderful. Welcome here. So, at this time, Commissioners, we have a contract that is waiting our approval. I would take a motion.
I will move to approve the city manager contract.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract between the city of Raton and Dr. Richard Mestes. Is there any further discussion? If this time does, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chavez?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. City Manager.
Just also, my dad is a native of Raton.
Oh, okay. Well, then, okay, then you're all right. You're all right. All right. I believe you did mention that in your interview, yes.
I just sent a message from Lori. She's trying to dial in.
Oh, I thought she said she was going to attend.
Okay, we'll let Commissioner Chatterley get on board here.
Sorry about that. I thought that's where I had my notes.
Yeah, I thought she was going to be on the road and unable as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought she had said.
Yeah.
It's all right. Don't get her on.
Yep. I've been there before.
Yeah.
your name followed by the pound key.
City Commission meeting.
Hello.
Hey Lori, how are you?
Good. I'm watching you guys.
Good. Did you, uh?
I'm here, I'm here. Did you have any comments real quick about Dr. Mestes? No, I'm just very excited to have him on board.
All right, all right, then we're going to move on. How's that?
Thank you. Okay.
All right, Item B, presentation. We've got a presentation here from the Raton Public Schools about the school construction bond issue. Kristi, Jason?
Very interesting. Worried my other half this evening, well, until two is undermined and later. Joined this evening by Ms. Medina, our superintendent, as well as Ms. Kathleen Honeyfield, our board member, and we are here to talk about the school bond issue. I'm sure most folks have got a little basics about it, but Kristi and I have been going door to door having a conversation with anybody that will listen, every organization or individual person. So, on tonight's sales pitch, you're up next. So, I'll turn it over to Kristi. We will be brief this evening. We know you have a lot of work ahead of you.
Yeah. Thank you all for having us tonight. As you all know, we will be going out for a bond come November 7th, so we ask you to get out and vote. It is an $8 million bond that'll be paid out over 17 years for a new consolidated pre-K-12 campus. So, we've done a lot of work with our teams that we pulled together. We had a site selection committee who decided that our primary site right now that we're taking a look at will be at the high school site. We would like to keep the gym. The gym is something we're investing in and doing a little bit of remodeling, as you know, with new seats and bleachers and floor and things like that, thanks to our booster club's support and help. And so, we will not get a gym that size again. So, it was definitely a space and square footage that we would like to keep and so, our site that we're looking at right now is there at the high school. As you'll notice on your fact sheets, this is something that we do hand out. We encourage you all to pass out and hand out as you come across family members, relatives, other people in the community. It has a lot of the key points that I think is important for people to know and understand. You'll see there a chart that has your estimated full value of your property. The taxable value will be one-third of that value. So, I'll give you the numbers in the next column and then what it is broken down annually and monthly. Now, currently, right now, taxes are about $5,398. We will add for the first four years, that $4.65 will be added to the $5.39 for the first four years. After the first four years, that number will go back down to around the $5 mark. So, that's something that some people don't realize or understand. So, it's a great investment for our schools. They're 70-year-old buildings right now. They're pretty outdated. It's getting harder and harder for us to keep them upgraded, to keep fixing them. Our boiler systems are aged. Many of the parts are non-existent anymore. We get ready to do projects and it ends up being a bigger project than what is anticipated or estimated because something has to be retrofitted. So, anything with our technology, fire alarm systems, you know, for security purposes, we're locking down three separate buildings all across the city versus if we're in one consolidated campus. Everything's right there. We can make sure it's a lot more secure. Our staff doesn't have to go between three buildings. They can, you know, just go across the campus. We've had several questions whether or not we would put together little students with bigger students and we won't. If you've been in new model schools, there's ways that they keep the little kids separate from the older kids, you know, just through the design. And so, we're asking the community to get out and vote. We have an opportunity through PSFA that if we commit as a community to do our part and pass the bond, we can go to them as soon as the bond passes showing our commitment and then they will give us a waiver. And that waiver will pay the rest of the cost of a new building. So, right now, it's estimated anywhere between 72,000 to 80,000. So, if we put in the eight, they'll put in the rest. And so, that's a pretty good deal. Don't know that the deal will be here in a couple of years. It may pass us by and it'll be too late. So, we just ask, yes?
72 to 80 million.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I was like, we're going to heck of a deal.
You're right on the heck of a deal. Apologize. Thanks Marty.
It's a small school.
Yeah. So, on your fact sheet, you also have other information there on the back as well, how it'll benefit our students, you know, many ways right now, as I said, with buildings that are 70 years old. They've served their purpose. They've done well for us. They still look great from the outside. Our maintenance and janitors do a really good job, but the inside, we oftentimes have separating walls, lots of leakages, different places, uneven floors, some safety issues. Not all of our buildings are, have well ADA, accessible access, not only for our staff, our students, but any families or visitors that come to visit. They're not the best and so, that's, you know, definitely something we would want to improve in a new building. If we're not able to pass the bond, it will take us still 30 million to be able just to keep them going up and maintained for the next few years, which is also money that we currently do not have. So, the plan, if the consolidation doesn't pass, that's part of the plan. We will have to come back to the drawing board and of course, take a look and see where we're at. If any one of our major systems crash, fail, we don't know what we'll have to do at that point. If our boilers fail at any point, you know, as I said, parts are obsolete and so, there may not be a way to heat our buildings. And so, we don't know what that looks like for students. You know, we've bounced around lots of options of other community places where we might be able to hold school or remote learning and we know really that's not good for our students. We've experienced that and we'd hate to go back to that. So, those are, those are hitting us a little bit closer than what we'd like and so, we have to really take this opportunity and pass this bond. On your fact sheet, you also have our website, our website. Thank you to Mrs. Chatterley. She helps us with our website. We have a ton of information on there for you to be able to look at, refer people to. We've been out doing interviews. We'll also be around town, going to different organizations and talking, just really trying to get people to go out that day and vote. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Kristi. So, we put Kristi in there so that we actually stay with brief because you know, Jason likes to talk a little too much. So, I'll just hit the highlights here. Why is now the right time? Oil and gas revenues are at a historic high. This $1 to 8 to 10 offer from the state is an hour never. Our schools, the worst of which is Longfellow, is ranked as the fifth worst school in the state of New Mexico and the three of the five above it are already funded and ready to be demolished. What happens with the old buildings, quite honestly, we're going to knock them down. You know, before we started this process, we asked the community why they were unsuccessful in the past. You couldn't answer the questions. What happens to the schools? We can't maintain them. They're, you know, the city was gracious enough to take Kearney, but there's only two organizations large enough to pay and maintain for these buildings, us and yourselves, and if we're moving out, the state's going to provide no money to do that.
Right.
So, Kearney will be kind of the testament to the WPA era school in Raton, but instead of looking backwards, we're hoping to look forward. I mean, this can has been kicked down the road during much better economic times in Raton's history. But, you know, I try not to be a drama king when I say that the future of Raton's at stake in this election. It's not my legacy or Kristi's. This school, from design to construction, will take at least five years. My last child's a senior. She'll never see this building unless she walks through it as a teacher one day. But, you know, in critical points, Raton's past leaders took hold of the moment and, you know, bought the civil water system, did things to advance this town for the next few generations. And this is our one shot to take 10% of our money, put it in the table. And people say, "Well, why aren't all three schools?" Once we slide our $8 million into the table, the state has said, whether it's an elementary school that costs 22 or right sizing your entire district, once Raton has skin in the game and makes the commitment, we go for the waiver request and they want a right-sized school. Raton High School has something to the effect of 17 doors. In a modern school shooting scenario, we don't have the ability to secure that. You know, the consolidated campus isn't, we would never mix your five-year-old with my 18-year-old. That, unless it's in a peer tutoring environment, that's not how it works. But, being on a central campus provides a lot of opportunities that we don't have and quite frankly, it's the largest construction project in the history of Raton for a fraction of the cost. I mean, imagine if you were looking to build your home, you usually come up with 20% down and finance the rest. We're inverted. We're looking to put 10% down. They pay for the rest for a four-year increase in property taxes and a maximum 17-year amortization schedule to pay it off. I mean, to me, it seems like a no-brainer and, you know, on a house my size, granted, 705 South Fifth, not the Taj Mahal, it's about the equivalent of one less fast food meal a month for one person. And I think that, whether I have a kid or not in this district, that's a small price to pay for Raton to be successful.
Sonic will miss you.
They will, but they will see me in the morning for my sweetie. Thank you all for your time. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We would like to point out that there is an in-depth interview that Marty conducted with Kristi and I on KRTN. It's about 40 minutes long, answers all the questions that you have, or Kristi and I would be happy to answer them in person. Call any board member. We are an open slate and transparent about what we're looking for here. As an elected official in this sense, I can't get out and urge you to vote yes, but since y'all aren't encumbered in my organization, you can feel free to support this bond in any way you see fit. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Any questions for either? I have a question in the back.
Is there any settling going on in that property up there?
Settling?
Settling.
On the high school property? Not that I'm aware of. I mean, on our structures themselves, there are some settlement issues, but do you want to expand on that, Mark? I'm not sure.
Are you going to go to the south, right?
Uh, our intention is to hopefully go to the south and the west as well. Plus, everything that we are currently situated on, with the exception of the school, will be used and repurposed. So, the building comes down and new buildings get constructed in that same footprint. Also, as part of this, we will have a track facility constructed by the state. So, it'll be not full-blown Tiger Stadium, but it'll be a full-size track.
Any other question? No, this is something I think the community needs to get behind. It's long overdue and as a private citizen voting, you've got my support.
Yeah. I might say this is one of the number one. It's right top of the list for positive economic development.
Yep.
For our community. It invites, it invites people to look at our community who are interested in adding businesses and...
It's one of the top questions we get when somebody's looking to put a business in is, "How are the schools?" I mean, it's first or second question every time.
Well, Mayor, and whether you're young or old, one of the main things we all rely on is quality medical care. And from the past, two CEOs of MCMC, I've heard the same refrain and that, you know, we try to recruit doctors through Raton. One of their main concerns is the schools that their children attend. And, I mean, our staffs are doing great work inside of these buildings.
Sure.
Right.
But, you know, people do judge a book by its cover, per se, and our cover is a 1932 facade right now.
All righty.
All right, good.
Anything else?
You know, Mr. Jacomo is one of the ones that got to go up to the new school up there when the auto mechanics was the main gym for the school. And everybody was grouchy about that movement from where it is, the junior high, you know. He was, he was in it because he's old.
Yeah.
But, it was, it was, it was thought to be a mare's horse and it, and it came out the right way.
Yep.
It really did.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
You bet. Anything?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I highly support this effort. Like Medina said, I've been helping with the school website on that and I hope everyone goes to that bond page and gets all that information. It's great information. I think the leveraging of the dollars is a super important point to understand this time around and also, just looking forward with technology and safety. I mean, we want our kids to have, have those services and the things that they need to stay safe and to be able to compete in the world. And I think having a better facility is going to really do that for them. And, you know, my kids won't experience it either. They're all going to be gone by then, but it's, I still support it and I'm still looking forward to helping, helping this path. So, thank you guys.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's move on to Item C, City Treasurer Report. Michael Ann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. In your packet this evening, this is just a report. There's no action required, but we do bring to you the official budget approval letter. This is for the fiscal year '24 budget. You'll see in the letter that they've confirmed that our budget was developed in accordance with the applicable statutes and budget guidelines and that we do have sufficient resources, or it appears that we have sufficient resources to be available to cover the budgeted expenditures. Below in the highlighted area, they do kind of put some words of caution. You'll recall that during our budget discussions and the final budget that we did approve, we did talk about possibly maintaining a 4/12ths, possibly 5/12ths reserve because we do have additional funds above the 1/12th minimum requirement. The commission did decide to put some of the monies that we have available in reserves to address certain items such as ball field improvements. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think it was to the tune of about 1.6 million in various improvements, which we consider one-time hits to the, to the budget. These aren't recurring expenses.
Right.
They're not salaries. But, they did put a word of caution there that due to the estimated expenditures and transfers that exceed our estimated revenue because it is coming from reserves, that our current general fund cash balance is being depleted by 22.16%. So, you know, we knew that when we approved it and so, that was part of our request to DFA to review the list of those expenditures that we were proposing for the fiscal year. So, our budget has been approved knowing that. There's also attached a copy of, it's called the LGBMS system budget recap. You will see that total expenditures budgeted for the general fund was $7,545,000 and then the total overall expenditures for this year's budget is $27,249,190. So, and that includes all of the grants that we've been awarded as well. So, we bring this to you this evening just as a report. It is required to be made a part of the city's minutes. And then also, as you know, the process here moving forward is any changes to the budget would require a budget adjustment. So, we will bring those to you as needed. Also, with respect to the Water Works and Raton Public Service, they hadn't received their physical letters, so we don't have those in your packet this evening, but they will bring this same item to the Water Board and the RPS Board to make it a part of those minutes as well. They do have a new analyst. RPS is on the LGBMS system and it's showing approved in the system, but that might receive the letter. So, that will be forthcoming. Any questions?
Any questions for Michael Ann? You know, like Michael Ann said, shows a little bit of a deficit there, but, you know, finally, we are at a point to where we can do some projects in this town.
Right.
And get things going and we're fortunate that we have that. So, good job with everything.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Item D, deliberate an act on approval of August 22nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes, August 25th, 2023 special meeting minutes, and the August 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes. If no, if there is no corrections to be found or amended, these minutes would stand approved as they are.
I found nothing.
I found that I make a motion to approve.
We learned we don't need to do that.
We actually learned we don't need to do that for merits.
Make motions.
As long as there's no amendments.
No corrections.
These amendments would stand approved as they are. All righty. Item E, deliberate an act on purchase of 2023 Ford F-150 utilizing Phil Long Ford CES contract number 2020-31A-101C. Mr. Phillips?
Mayor and Commissioner, as I change hats, the dollar value of what we're asking for gets increasingly less. So, instead of 90 million, we're humbly asking for $42,380 this evening to purchase a single cab F-150 pickup truck for the Public Works Department. It is within our budget for this fiscal year and it is available from Phil Long Ford. It'll be replacing a 1999 pickup truck in our fleet. They'll be surplus out. So, it would be a much-needed addition to the fleet. We got a little behind on truck purchases during COVID. This is, I anticipate, our last vehicle purchase of this fiscal year, but we would humbly ask you to approve this purchase and I would stand for any questions if anybody has one.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Phillips? And enter again the motion. A motion and a second to approve the purchase of the pickup truck for the Public Works Department. Is there any further discussion? All, Lori, did you have something to say?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Medina did leave some fact sheets on the bond.
Oh, okay.
In front of the back. So, I will put those on the table if you or anyone else would like to take some and pass them out.
She gave us all one up here.
If anybody needs more for friends and family, just let me know, and we'll give them to you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item F, deliberate an act on resolution 2023-55, application for Water Trust Board funding for renovation of potable water storage tank. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, uh, we are gonna talk about two grant applications tonight. Uh, the first one is described in resolution 2023 dash 55. Jaden Welch, our city engineer, who is present here tonight, uh, has been working on this along with the, uh, with Rattone Water Works. Uh, and what we anticipate is submission of an application for, uh, funding through the Water Trust Board. Uh, that would be applicable to the renovations of the three-million-gallon potable steel, uh, water storage tank that is located at the water treatment plant. Um, periodically, we inspect those tanks and, uh, we'll, uh, perform work or maintenance as necessary. On the inside, we do that by diving in the tank. And so, that, uh, process has taken place here recently. And, uh, what we spotted from the recent inspection is ongoing corrosion, uh, internal to the tank. Uh, that affects some connections, which are bolted connections on the interior. Uh, we do have a, uh, system that, uh, that, uh, will prevent corrosion, and we will replace that system. Uh, but generally, the, uh, what we wanna do is take the tank out of service at a certain point, uh, clean up the corrosion, and then add a new coating to the tank. Of course, it's a potable water tank, so, uh, that coating would have to be a system that is approved by applicable standards, uh, generally under the National Sanitary Foundation. Uh, so, that's a general description. Of course, three-million-gallon tank, that's our largest, uh, tank. We estimate that the project will cost 1.5 million dollars. Uh, what I've brought you here tonight would be an application to go to the Water Trust Board, uh, for 1.25 million dollars. Also, in the resolution, uh, you would be, uh, committing $250,000 of local funds. Those local funds would come from the supplementary, supplementary, uh, grocery seats tax, which, uh, is currently at 0.75%. Uh, this item has been considered by the Water Board. They passed a similar resolution, uh, also committing the $250,000 uh, match. The grant application is due on the 15th. So, upon your consideration, if it is favorable to those terms, uh, Mr. Welch will, uh, get the application finished up, and we anticipate submission tomorrow morning. So, on this. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, any questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll throw one thing, uh, in there. The tank was constructed, uh, 1988.
Alrighty. Yeah, this is a great opportunity again, because again, with the state being flush as they are right now, there is over 138 million dollars in the Water Trust Board fund right now. So, this application would probably be very favorable and probably would go through. Plus, we have a few connections there, so.
I make a motion to approve resolution 20 dash 23 dash 55, application for Water Trust Board funding and renovation of potable water storage tank.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023 dash 55. Any further questions? Discussion?
Yes, I do.
Okay. That's right.
I just wanted the public to know that I have a thing from the Water Board that, that talks about the tank and everything that has to be done in it. There's pictures from the diver. And, uh, so I'm gonna leave it here, and anybody that wants to see what has to be done and what needs to be done can look at it. And they're all colored pictures.
Two of them, so.
Put them right there.
Any other questions? Comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Harry Nunn, motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Item H, deliberate an act on, oh, item G, let's go to item G. How about that? Deliberate an act on BIL Airport Infrastructure Structure Grant Number 3 dash 35 dash 0033 dash 027 dash 2023 for the Rattone Municipal Airport Electrical Vault. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, the BIL stands for the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. Uh, you have a grant offer, uh, in front of you that we have received from Federal Aviation Administration. This is something that we've, uh, talked about for, uh, some months now, and this would be a design-only grant for replacement of an electrical vault. What the electrical vault consists of, uh, the electrical service to the airport comes in to the vault, and then we distribute power to, uh, the terminal and hangars, uh, the beacon and runway lights. And so, we have very aged equipment out there. You'll remember, uh, some time ago, we replaced the precision approach plane indicator, the PAPI, and, uh, we had some issues with, uh, properly powering that thing up. And we've worked, uh, on this particular project, uh, since then. So, you do have the, uh, grant offer for your consideration. Let me flip a couple of pages in the grant offer. Um, the costs that we're talking about are things that we have put together and proposed, uh, to FAA. Uh, the design would be done by our airport engineers, Molsen, Corbin, and Associates. They have worked on the, uh, estimate. Uh, FAA offers a grant here of 73,988. That is 90% of the design, uh, cost that would be paid to the engineers, Molsen, Corbin. Uh, the remainder of the, uh, uh, the funding is covered under, uh, a grant that was approved in April by the commission and by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Under that, there's a cautionary arrangement for the additional, uh, 10%. So, the total project, 82,209. Uh, the state will cover 9%. The city of Rattone will commit to 1% of the project. That is 822 bucks. Uh, so, this is a, uh, important need for the city. What you'll recall, we're doing a design-only agreement, uh, on the renovation of Taxiway B. And then, under our capital improvement plan, construction of both projects would commence in 2024 and 2025. And we would look for some discretionary funds for those projects.
Alrighty, thank you. Questions, comments for Mr. Berry?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Thank you, Michael.
It did.
Motion and a second has been made to approve the agreement, the Airport Infrastructure Grant Agreement, the BIL. Is there any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Item H, deliberate an act on resolution 2023-56, perpetual public benefit resulting from the Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, in the 2023 regular session of the New Mexico Legislature, uh, there was an appropriation of, from the capital outlay bill in the amount of 564,000 dollars.
Sorry, Chatterley, pass left.
To the city of Rattone. Um, we have not received a, uh, grant agreement on that. And how that mechanism works is the, uh, grant agreement, uh, is issued by the Department of Finance and Administration, specifically the Local Government Division. Now, uh, the, I have met with, uh, Local Government Division, uh, recently, and we had the same issue on Kearney School. You might remember us talking about in, uh, following that meeting, the, the grant agreement for Kearney School was issued, uh, and they put a couple of hoops for us to jump through in regard to this, uh, appropriation for, uh, the purchase of Bartlett Mesa Ranch. Now, you'll remember the, the proposal, uh, the city is working with a couple of conservation groups, the Nature Conservancy and the Trust for Public Land, also a couple of state agencies, uh, Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department. In that department is New Mexico State Parks, the, uh, operators of Sugar Tree Canyon State Park, and then also, uh, New Mexico Game and Fish Department. And so, uh, the Game and Fish, uh, Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources, and the two conservation groups have, uh, brought, uh, uh, their share of the funding to the purchase of the Bartlett Mesa Ranch, uh, private, was, was a privately-owned, uh, parcel used for, uh, pasture. It's a 2,224-acre parcel. The Nature Conservancy has purchased that. And what they do is, uh, generally, they upfront acquisitions like this, and then they attempt to transfer that to state or local control. Now, they've got a significant amount of funding in this, but they are looking for reimbursement of a portion of that, uh, purchase amount. And the funding deficit was 564,000. That's what we asked for, uh, from the legislature. Uh, so, if we received the funds, we ultimately would transfer that to the Nature Conservancy, uh, and then work out the ownership of this. But the goal is that this, uh, 2,000-plus-acre site would be annexed to Sugar Tree Canyon State Park. It would become a part of that managed by, uh, New Mexico State Parks and increase the area of Sugar Tree Canyon State Park by more than 50%. Uh, so, this is reflecting back on the city's Economic Development Strategic Plan of 2021, where we identified outdoor recreation, uh, as, uh, a primary focus area, uh, of our economic development plan. And so, uh, this is something that, uh, staff here has worked very hard on. I know, Commissioners, you've given your support, uh, to this. We went to the legislature and, and asked for this, and this is kind of the final, uh, thing. Now, from the perspective of Local Government Division, if capital outlay is assigned to, uh, build a bridge or by a, uh, a solid waste truck, they understand how that goes to public benefit. Uh, when it comes to Kearney School, where we have a LEEDA agreement and a not-for-profit, uh, involved, we need, there are special conditions attached. And certainly on this Bartlett Mesa Ranch acquisition, there are special conditions attached. Namely, we need to, uh, obtain a legal opinion for, and submit that to Local Government Division, uh, enumerating that, uh, for this 563, 64,000-dollar, uh, capital outlay, there is public benefit that is equivalent, uh, to that purchase. And so, we are working on that, uh, that, uh, legal opinion for submission, as they have asked for. But I bring you this resolution. And under this resolution, the commission, uh, will state that the purchase of the property, uh, will, uh, lead to the annexation with Sugar Tree Canyon State Park, and the area will be available for public use and enjoyment, uh, in perpetuity. That's what you would be, uh, stating. So, uh, this will follow that meeting, and it'll, uh, give us the, uh, meet their special conditions, and then ultimately, you'll see a grant agreement for this capital outlay come in front of you.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Berry. And in short, you know, this is just their way of making us show that we are not violating the anti-donation laws.
That is exactly it. Uh, in our discussions, they mentioned that, uh, the attorney there, who is the watchdog of the anti-donation clause of the state constitution, and, uh, we're happy that they, uh, watch out for that.
Yep, absolutely. Any comments, questions?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve resolution 2023 dash 56. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Item I, deliberate an act on resolution 2023-57, Support of Recreation Centers/Quality of Life Grant Application. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commission, um, this is the second grant application that, uh, I wanna talk to you about tonight. It's something that we have talked about, uh, uh, prior to tonight at the last, uh, city commission meeting. And this anticipates submission of a, uh, grant funding application, uh, to New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration. There is 40 million dollars available for this program, the New Mexico Regional Recreation Center and Quality of Life Grant Program. This is due by the end of day tomorrow, and it's something that we talked about previously. And, uh, Commissioners, you directed us to look at, uh, four different projects. This really goes back to our budget workshop, uh, in which we said, uh, let's put some of our excess revenues or, or reserves to work on quality of life improvements in the community. And when we talk about quality of life improvements, there are a lot of ideas, uh, out there on how we could, uh, improve recreation, uh, parks, uh, trails, outdoor recreation, and other quality of life in Rattone. There's a lot of ideas. Honestly, we've underfunded those things, uh, over the years. So, we have a lot to do. Uh, and, uh, in that budget, you, you did, uh, budget about a half a million dollars, and we identified, uh, a list of projects at the Little League Complex or the Baseball and Softball Complex as something that we want to undertake immediately. So, staff has been working on that, specifically, uh, Mr. Phillips. And that project would consist of construction and placement of new restroom facilities at the Baseball and Softball Complex, renovation of existing buildings, namely the concession stands, uh, addition of bleachers and sunshades. Uh, now, following our discussion at the last commission meeting, there was a webinar, uh, specific to this, uh, this grant, uh, program. And during that webinar, they stated that really, they'll focus on, uh, they'll look at one grant application per entity. Being a municipality, you can submit that. I suppose you could submit additional applications, but they'll look at one. Um, they, uh, give you points. Uh, they, they grade you higher if it has a regional aspect, and if it has an economic development aspect for the community. Uh, and I realized at that point that our baseball, softball complex, uh, uh, proposal that we talked about really fits this, in my opinion, uh, perfectly, and would have a, a, a really strong chance of getting funded. So, I've brought you this resolution for your consideration. We've talked about a lot of things in this area. Uh, but what my proposal to you is, we would request 399,000 dollars of grant funds under this program. You would commit to 100,000 dollars in matching funds. That's a, that's a strong match for this, uh, application. So, there's, uh, additional consideration for that. Uh, that would really free up 400,000 dollars that you've budgeted for quality of life, uh, projects. And then we're back to talking about, uh, you know, a lengthy list of things that we need to address in the community. Now, Mayor and Commission, I think you have some folks, uh, present tonight that really wanna talk to you about that quality of life and, and, uh, improvements in recreation and parks in the community. Uh, so, that's something, you know, I, we always welcome that, that public input, and uh, it's a, it's a great conversation for us, uh, to have. And I think it's something that, uh, we'll be working on for a number of years. But I'll hold up there, and I'll answer any questions that you have, let you consider the resolution, or have a discussion.
Alrighty, any questions, comments? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
I just have one comment. Uh, I think this is a good idea to do this and create those funds. If we could get this grant money, that'd be wonderful. I wondered if it might strengthen our application to add, uh, another whereas, after the second two whereas, that would say something like, whereas the city of Rattone has supported field use with the Rattone Public Schools, the Rattone Little League, and other community partners, and something about, um, uh, some of the Little League tournaments and things that happen here that might strengthen, uh, the resolution. That was my only suggestion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can, we can, um, I'm just trying to figure out where we're gonna put it. But, uh, yeah, we could probably do that, Laurie.
Yeah, I just thought maybe, 'cause as, as I was reading in there, they've done a wonderful job with this, uh, just focusing on some of those other partnerships of who else uses the fields.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could adopt it with that amendment, and then, uh, we could sign, um, a fresh one tomorrow morning.
Absolutely.
Anyone wish to address?
Thank you.
That's it this time. Alright. Please come to the forward, state your name, and we'll gladly listen to you.
My name is Valerie Sikora, and we are here with the Rattone Pickleball Club again. Just because it's so important, we wanna keep, uh, our requests at the forefront, because we are busy. We've had a very busy summer. We've had tourists from all over the country in Canada stop by and play with us. Uh, you know, we're still having 12... You know, we're still having 12 to 14 players a day, and we have a group that plays in the evening. So when it comes to recreation in Rattone, we are probably one of the biggest clubs, and we recreate every day. We're still traveling out of town to tournaments and spending a lot of money in other communities. I would like to introduce Dr. Brian Naziri, talk to you a little bit, and thank you for listening to us. We really appreciate it, and we think it's a really important recreational activity in Rattone for economic development as well as just people in Rattone having fun. So I'll introduce.
Absolutely. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Like Val said, I'm Brian. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the Rattone Pickleball Group. I I think that the grant application thing is going to be potentially mutually beneficial for the Rattone Pickleball Group. It sounds like it could potentially free up somewhere near, if I understood correctly, about $400,000 worth of quality-of-life recreation improvement funds. I know we had presented to you guys before a design with a private investor for the design of eight pickleball courts. I know we had some disagreements on a location, and that may have caused the the private investor to kind of pull out. We're still optimistic that if we can actually have some sort of city backing, that we can maybe re-approach the private investor and maybe get them on board as well. And then also that we're hoping that if we do have some sort of city backing, we could also approach the county and say, hey, we have this amount of money set aside. If I understood correctly, the grant application is due tomorrow. And so it'd probably be a tall order to ask for additions to that. If if we had a little more time, I think that could have bolstered maybe that grant application in terms of economic drive as well. But I think under time constraints, it's probably too much to ask. But what we are asking is that the the city does consider using some of the freed-up funds for the application and the construction of the pickleball courts. As the pickleball group has kind of debated on best locations, we did kind of concede that. We do believe the aquatic center is an amenable location. I think that'll serve both the community well, keep everything in a centralized location. So we are completely on board in regards to a location.
Great.
In terms of a size and funding, I believe we had estimates from this year for eight courts. And that came in, and that's complete with the concrete work, with fencing, the nets, everything that we really need to to have eight courts. Granted, you know, I know in a ti in a year, estimates can change. So these aren't exactly probably going to be relevant for 2024. But the total price given was just shy of $363,000. And that's for eight courts. That would allow tournament play, attracting other players from other cities, to help, again, drive economic development. But it's also a big quality-of-life thing. So obviously, we'd be requesting the consideration of those funds to at least get somewhere close to that. I think that's about it. Do you guys still have, or would you guys like copies of the estimates that we had given?
I've still got mine, so.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, I think, Brian, yeah, I think this grant comes at the right time because we set aside about $400,000, a little over $400,000 for recreation activities. And we were wondering how we were going to divvy that up and make everybody happy.
Sure.
So now with this grant, that takes care of our ball fields because we know that is an economic driver. We get the Little League All-Star Games. We get all of that out-of-town traffic in. And at the same time, it frees up some money that we can. We have not forgot about you pickleballers. We have not.
I think we can safely guarantee that you are not forgotten.
Yeah. So I think we we are even closer now to even coming to some kind of understanding. And if you could get the county to to climb on board, too, absolutely.
That'd be really great.
Sure, sure. Is there a time in which you guys would have a decision based on the excess funds, assuming the grant is?
If the grants agreed upon, I think we can start work. Well, we're gonna have to talk to our new boss over there, too. So we can start negotiating and seeing what where we can put these funds to use.
What is the deadline for acceptance of the the grant? When do we find out if the grant was approved or not?
I would say that one aspect of this grant, there's some there's some conflict in the documents, but they're saying that the project has to be complete June of 2024. That is quick. So that tells me that they have to award these funds quickly and notify the awardees. And and I I think we'll find out very quickly. What that what a quick timeframe is, you know, I'm not sure. But certainly before the legislature convenes. Again, I'd say before the end of the year, we'll know how this thing is coming out.
And and the city funds that would be then available, is there a timeframe in which those have to be?
Those are budgeted in the current budget, which is also June of '24.
So, yeah, I think we could get to action on a lot of things here.
Excellent, excellent. Any other questions for me?
Any questions, comments?
Now, to kind of tie this together, Michael Land had reported to you that DFA said, you know, we have a decrease in the general fund reserve. And the biggest component of that was the fact that we talked about in the budget workshop, hey, we need to put some of this reserve to work, and we have underfunded these these quality-of-life things in the community.
Yep, absolutely. So we're thinking about you.
I have a question definitely there. If everything goes well and get everything approved and get the money, how long will it take to complete once they start?
If I recall correctly, and again, can't speak on behalf of any of the contractors, but at the time, I think we were estimated about a three-month construction from start to finish.
So if they start in June, July, August?
Well, we're sooner.
It has to be completed by?
Well, if we if we obligate the funds.
Then it has to go through the bidding process, et cetera. Yeah, it can't be the one. I mean, the people they found can bid on it, but they can't. We can't guarantee.
Right. We have to go through the RFP process.
Yeah. But generally, the answer would be about three months of actual construction time once everything is ready to go.
So it could possibly be ready by summer of '24?
Possibly.
Possibly, possibly.
That would be a hope.
Any other questions?
Originally, when that first brought it about when we were talking about the downtown location, that they had said 90 days to construct it. So that's you hit it right about the right.
Yeah, that's correct.
And hopefully, maybe your private investor will come back to the table.
We're always optimistic.
Or there there might be others out there.
Yeah, and like I was saying, if, you know, everything always starts with one. If you have one on board, the rest usually will follow. But it's usually hard to get that one.
Yeah, and I know a lot of the concern and questions, well, what are you going to do with the lot over here? In a couple of weeks, we are having a planning meeting. The architect will be here to look at some concepts and take some ideas, and we'll go from there.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
I will move to approve Resolution 2023-57, support of recreation centers' quality-of-life grant application.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-57 with the proposed amendments from Commissioner Chatterley. Lori, if you could email those to Scott, and then we could type those in.
Sure, sure. If they think that's a good addition, I don't want to make more work when it's due tomorrow, but I I thought that might strengthen it.
It's no problem.
Mr. Berry assures us that's no problem. All righty, with the amendments. Any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then motion carries five oh. Item J, deliberate and act on 2023-2024 dispatch agreement between the city of Rattone and Colfax County. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commission, we did consider this dispatch agreement on June 27, 2023. The city of Rattone operates the Regional Dispatch Center here in City Hall, and generally, we dispatch for entities in Colfax County and and regionally. And we have an agreement, an annual agreement, a year-long agreement with those entities. So back in June, the commission approved the 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 annual renewal of the dispatch agreement. However, that agreement was not approved at that time by Colfax County. And Colfax County did ask for a 60-day extension on that agreement, which the Rattone City Commission did approve. We are through that 60-day extension period now currently. And I bring the the dispatch agreement back to you for your consideration. There are no changes in the agreement from what you all looked at back in June. And basically, we would provide dispatch services to the county of Colfax for the sum of $75,000 for a one-year period, billable monthly.
Yep, and I have no problems with that. I think for years, we were very generous. And with our numbers have backed up the the need for increasing that. So I still stand by what we did two months ago. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion and the two, 20-23-24 dispatch agreement between the city of Rattone and Colfax County.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the dispatch agreement between the city of Rattone and Colfax County. Any further discussion? Des, could we have a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Motion passes five zip. Thank you. Item K, deliberate and act on body camera purchasing utilizing Axon State prizing pricing, price agreement number 80-000-18-00048AF. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commission, we are talking about 15 camera bundles. These would be applied in the Rattone Police Department. We have used these for a number of years, but we are looking at an upgrade of that system. Currently, you do have a five-year proposal in front of you from Axon Enterprises Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona. If we added up all of the items over that five-year agreement, that's $45,242.54. That would include the camera bundles, some other hardware that goes to the operation of the camera, software, and storage of data. So that's what we're looking at over a five-year period. This would be billable, generally, in a little bit of a little over $9,000 per year for that five-year period to run through October of 2027. Now, we have two ways to go on funding this. And generally, right now, we would be committing our appropriation from the Law Enforcement Protection Fund. You'll recall in past years, the legislature has significantly increased the distribution of law enforcement protection funds, generally based on the number of officers that you have employed. And we can fund this that way. However, you'll also recall that the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund has said we will fund this type of purchase as well, the cameras, and I think the the body protection. So we'll approach the New Mexico Self Insurers, see if if they want to participate in this. But we can cover this currently with the LEPF distribution that we get annually.
Yeah, and I I think, you know, being on the Self Insurers Fund Board, I think we ought to approach them. They do have the money available. But like Scott said, we do have it in the LEPF as well. And we'd entertain a motion. A motion and a second to approve the purchase of, yeah, I'm having a hard time with this one for some reason, body cameras for our police. With the the state price, thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, this one just doesn't want to roll off the tongue. I don't know why. Anyway, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call on this one, Des, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Thank you. Item L, we're almost there. Deliberate and act on downtown tower lease between the city of Rattone and Baca Valley Telephone Company, Inc. Mr. Berry.
Mayor, Commission, under this, this would be renewal of an existing lease agreement between the city of Rattone and Baca Valley Telephone Company. There is a tower that is existing, has existed for about 20 years on property that is owned by the city of Rattone, a 0.129 acre parcel. So we would be renewing that under the same terms. Now, this is generally located in the area of the RPS generator that would be west of the railroad tracks in the area of BTU concrete. So if you recall, that tower, that's the structure that we're talking about. This would be for a 10-year term. Let me flip back some pages. Baca Valley would agree to pay the city of Rattone $12,500 for the 10-year term. That is $1,250 per year would be payable, same terms as as the expiring agreement.
Actually, east of the tracks, isn't it?
You're right. It is east of the tracks. That's correct. Yes.
Any other comments, questions?
Make the motion to approve downtown tower lease between the city of Rattone and Baca Valley.
The second.
Motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the city of Rattone and Baca Valley Telephone Company. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. And item M, city manager report. Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mayor. A report on the result of an application that I had filed sometime back with the Economic Recovery Corps. That is a program, let's see if I can find that, under the International Economic Development Corporation. And this is a little different type of application. They are funding a fellowship for those that are selected. So we did apply, and I was notified that Rattone will advance to Phase Three of the host selection process for this inaugural Economic Recovery Corps program. What they have asked us is if we would collaborate with Taus because we have very similar economic issues that we stated in our application. And we said, yes, we would share the fellow with the city of Taus. So this is a program, again, through the International Economic Development Council. Rattone was selected from among 500 applications, and they have 65 fellow placements. So we will now advance to Phase Four of the project. That consists of host and fellow matching. That process will commence on October 1st. The program is is funded through June 2026. What the fellow will do is work on onsite capacity building support and technical assistance. The fellow will work with our existing economic development team here in Rattone. So we were excited about that award. I'll report to the commission on on this item. Myself and the staff have been working with engineers that are consulting to Amtrak on the placement, the platform replacement project, something that we've talked about for a while. They've been working on that, but the challenge is the drainage system in the area of the platform and the depot. We have provided them some some record drawings of the existing drainage system, and they are working currently on some improvements to that drainage system. But we're optimistic that the platform project will go forward and be constructed, well, within the next 12 months, I would say. A personnel issue, I would report to the commission. Sherry Romero, who worked as our accounts receivable, accounts payable person in the administration department, has left the city of Rattone and taken another opportunity. has left the city of Rattone and taken another opportunity. And I want to recognize Sherry as doing an excellent job for the years that she's worked for the city of Rattone. And I want to welcome Taren Giacomo to the office. She has joined our team and really is an excellent addition to the office. Well, thank you, Taren. Lastly, I'll state, I did get a letter today. This is on an application we submitted to New Mexico Department of Transportation through their transportation project fund. They, they gave us the, the letter to notice to, that we were awarded one project that we requested funding on. It's about $550,000 for the replacement of three small bridges. Two of those are on Railroad Avenue and then a bridge on Schuler Avenue. What we'll replace those with will be concrete box covers. This was an application put together by Jason Phillips,